Good morning, welcome to the July fifteenth regular session of the Board of Supervisors. Roll call please.
Brandt.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Layland.
Here.
Here. Please join in the moment of silence to reflect on this morning's actions. Please stand if you're able to join for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance is to the right United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Item one, agenda received. Receive agenda as proposed or amended.
Summit, second.
Fall in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item two, public comments, this is time reserved for anyone in the audience or online who wishes to speak to an item that is not on this morning's agenda. None, remove to item three, claims and payments, this is a resolution of the Board of Supervisors approves expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue payments against the various settlements of such claims. Summit.
Second.
Good morning Board, our total bill payment today is two million one hundred ninety-six thousand three hundred forty-two dollars and eleven cents and that is different than the first printout you received last week because we added a check for the closing on the Raymond Range property. The sixty forty fund portion of that is two thousand eight hundred sixty-nine dollars and sixty cents. We are paying a very large payment today, most of our property and casualty insurance premiums, that is eight hundred and six thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars plus another five thousand four hundred and fifty dollars to American Bankers for a flood insurance. We also have some construction payments today, they're almost becoming routine. Peters Construction for the VA building, four forty-three, two oh seven and two cents. And here's for the public health renovations, two hundred thirty thousand four hundred ninety-eight dollars and forty-six cents. And then some of our other entities, E nine one one is also paying insurance premium, forty-five thousand six eighty-seven. Consolidated Communications is also paying one, twenty-five thousand nine eighty-two. And I think that's all the large things today. Everything appears to be in order, any questions for me?
All right, so resolution, roll call please.
Brandt.
Yes.
Curtinback.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item four, receive project updates from department heads and local officials.
Good morning Board, Kathy English, county engineer. A brief update on our bridge crew activities, they have moved out to work on the bridge replacement on West Montgomery Road. They did just complete the demolition and they, I was out there this morning, they are working on putting in the, starting on the driving the file, if you are interested in seeing that. Tomorrow would be a good day, if tomorrow possibly end or Thursday. If that doesn't work out, we'll be going up over to the east side of the bridge to put in that abutment, possibly next week, I can keep you posted, but it would be a good chance for you to come see some activity that they do. There's a very loud activity in the pile driving, so we'll get you some earplugs. And then one other last thing is we are continuing to mow the gravel road system, we are, excuse me, the paved road and the gravel road system. We are a bit behind this year, just due to the weather and then some equipment issues over the last month, so we are busily catching up on our coin. Can I answer any questions at this time?
It would be a good time on Thursday.
I can check with the bridge crew, but I would dare generally working approximately from eight until two.
Okay.
Good, possibly, we can definitely try for the morning and I can let you know.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning Board, Linda Hensman, Treasurer, just want to give an update after six months of being displaced into the basement facility area. We have transitioned our way back to our new space. We started working on that throughout the day yesterday, well, it's actually been ongoing for a while, but we started the major, most of it yesterday, throughout the day, finished up yesterday evening and we opened up this morning in our new space. It's a fantastic, wonderful area, if you've not seen it, come check it out. It is so exciting for Blackhawk County moving forward, I've already heard comments from the individuals that come in quite frequently or just have totally been in awe with the new space. With that being said, I just want to thank everyone that's helped us with our transition, IT maintenance, the support from all of the board, just everyone for helping us make this transition smooth and I'm just excited for the new space where years to come.
I have an update today too, I wanted to talk a little bit about the system that was here last week about the Washburn issues. The road repair that he mentioned, that was related to a water pipe repair that has been done and the Water Works repaired it, it has sunk, so engineering and Kathy was kind enough to have someone look at that and we're going to put together an estimate and I'll be back to you with an estimate to have somebody fill that in so it looks better.
Do we know, like I said, will it be internal, we'll do it?
Sounded like we will do it externally.
External.
Yeah, there's someone to do it.
All right.
Yeah. Yep, and we are working on a contract extension with Urban Services for the pump panel replacement. We've, we've had him doing a lot of other things, he is planning to come and talk with the board next Tuesday, he could not be here today because they are, he had to shut the whole system down this morning while they're working on the sewer valve replacement project, so he's having to work and coordinate with that. So we'll have a presentation from him next week and I believe Rory was working on the vehicle, I don't have anything you want to update about that?
Uh, yeah, hi Rory giving, uh, facilities director, we do have a code section that we're going to use to enforce the removal of the boat on the right away, we'll be working with our code enforcement officers to do that, so I'll give you an update once that's complete. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
I have one question related to the estimate, so are we going to be expected to pay that for craftsmanship that was subpar to begin with?
Yes, it's our, it's our water line, it's not really necessarily subpar, but it's kind of how Water Works does their repairs and they routinely have the customer, which in this case is us, has to pay if you want it different. So it, I don't know that it was anything subpar, it's just the process when you have repairs. Biggest thing they didn't do is reach out to us about it, they did send me a bill, which I had you authorize and we paid for the valve repair itself.
Yeah.
But they didn't mention the road, so it didn't, they did what they did and that's all they've done.
Is anyone coordinating, I guess with Mr. Mosh?
I guess we got to call him to know.
Just to let him know that we'll be back in touch with him.
Yeah, I was going to call him once we, Rory and I have been not together, so I wanted the three of us between Kathy, Rory and I to talk before we reach out to him.
Okay, super, thank you.
He knows that we're working on stuff.
Yeah, I knew he did, but I just kind of just didn't get to know him.
Would it be common practice, last thing I promise, would it be common practice for just, I mean, do we send somebody out to make sure that it's satisfactory before they...
We, we could do that, I'll be honest, this has actually never happened before as far as I know in the Washburn system, I know we haven't assessed anybody before, so I think some communication just didn't happen that should happen, because you're right, we certainly should be checking to make sure it's the way it should be when it's done, I agree with that.
Just curious as well, thank you.
Yep.
Sorry, that was just for Tori to come up to the podium. Gavin DuWitt, marketing coordinator, I just wanted to let you know that we had twelve staff sign up for the Dunkerton Parade this weekend and a few family members that will be signing the waiver that we talked about earlier, so we're looking forward to that on Saturday, the parade's at ten, I believe lineup is at nine fifteen, we'll have a couple roads vehicles in that parade and then also the Blackhawk County, I call it the IT vehicle because it belongs to them, but it just doesn't have like a program on it. So we're looking forward to that and then I will be out next week, I'm attending the Certified Public Communicator Program at TCU and so I'm looking forward to it, I've seen the schedule, it, it looks really great and so I just thank the board's support for that. Any questions for me?
I might not quit fitting this section, but I'm wedging myself in anyway, I'm going to be here and be gone. My name is Kelly Enlikar, I'm the chief judge of the first judicial district, I was before you a couple weeks ago, talking about the Blackhawk County hospitalization referee, I just wanted to give a quick update, it's a happy update. We, you might remember that I was here before asking you to please pledge up to a hundred percent support for July as we were trying to limp this thing along, reach an agreement with the state, I'm happy to say we have had a meeting with them, with their general counsel, which was good, we had their lawyer on the line, we could directly communicate with them, we're, we still don't have a contract, but we have a written commitment via an email, which Supervisor Layland was included on that email, that they are committing to their seventy percent that they have always funded, we just haven't hammered out the contract terms yet and that includes payment beginning July, so the commitment that you made to pay a hundred percent in July, we will just need your thirty percent. And in the past, we have always had a single contract that the state signed off on, judicial branch signed off on, and county signed off on, because the state this year is wanting a few additional terms within the contract, we're going to have two contracts, one contract for your thirty percent that we'll sign with you between the judicial branch and the county and then one contract for the state's seventy percent that we'll sign with them, but we, we do have that commitment, they, they were actually really good to work with once we actually spoke to them and I just wanted to provide you with that update and we'll get you the thirty percent contract as soon as we can.
Okay, thanks for all your work on it as well, it kind of helped us get it going.
And thank you as well, I mean, you guys have been a great partner on this, I mean, it is, I think we all see how vital it is and, and Indiana State did too, it was just a matter of them sort of settling the dust on all the other things that they had going on, so I appreciate the working relationship with all of you as well, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other department heads or electeds either in the room or online? All right, see if, seeing none, we'll move to the minutes approved for the July eighth meeting.
Summit.
Second.
Fall in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item six, hearing in nine oh five, hearing bid opening for furniture for phase B of the Pine Congress renovations. Item seven, the consent agenda, the items listed below will be acted upon by a single resolution without separate discussion unless someone from the board or the public requests that a specific item be considered separate.
Summit.
Second.
Let's see, a, resolution.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Curtinback.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item eight, resolution of the federal aid agreement between Blackhawk County and the Iowa Department of Transportation, I dot agreement number two dash two, two five dash H B P dash S dash O three four for the highway bridge program grant project B R S dash C zero zero seven dash six zero zero seven, uh, Winslow Road over the tributary to West Fort Cedar River, be approved and direct the chair to sign for settlement recommended by Kathy.
Summit.
Second.
Good morning again Board, I just want to give you a little bit of background on this bridge, this is programmed for construction for next year, it's in our five-year plan, it's in the federal stip, this is the standard federal aid, federal aid, state agreement that we have with Iowa DOT when we use our federal funds, we are using regular formula federal fund, bridge funds for this project, if you're not familiar with that, that means these are funds that do not run through the RTA, counties receive bridge funding from the Iowa DOT, we typically receive about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for bridge, formula bridge funding, we are going to use seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars for this bridge next year, it's, the bridge was built in nineteen sixty-six, so it'll be approximately sixty years old when we replace it next year, it has a decaying timber pile, the deck is in fair condition, it's rated as fair just due to some spalling and some holes that have developed over the years, so I would ask that you please sign this agreement with, and we'll get it submitted to the DOT so we can get the process, continue with the process of this bridge being replaced. Can I answer any questions?
When do you think that timeline will be Kathy and Lee or is it too early?
Yeah, we've, uh, final plans are due to the DOT in the next, I think they're, they've already been submitted, it will be in a November or December letting of this year and then it will be slated for construction next, next calendar year.
Any other questions, this is a resolution, roll call please.
Curtinback.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item nine A, resolution to accept the ADA playgrounds project is substantially complete and authorize the final project invoice in the amount of forty-seven thousand five hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy-four cents to be paid to Play Power LT Farmington Inc. Utilizing the American Rescue Plan funds, the same has been approved by the Conservation Board and recommended for approval by the Board of Supervisors.
Summit. Second.
Is anybody from Conservation on?
Yeah, I'm Shereen Orthrup, Blackhawk County Conservation and this is just one of our final ARPA projects and the, the contractor has finished the punch list items, so we are ready to close this project.
Is this, uh, just a reminder for the public which parks this includes?
Uh, we have a new playground now at Sigil Cove Park, Blackhawk Park, Hickory Hills Park and McFarland Park.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So resolution, roll call please.
Layland.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Curtinback.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item nine B, resolution to approve the opioid litigation settlement with Sandals Inc. To authorize the board chair to sign the participation form for the same and to authorize the board chair to sign any other settlement documents related to Sandals Inc. opioid litigation settlement as submitted by Mike Tryden, assistant county engineer.
Summit.
Second.
All right, this is the latest in several installments that we've gotten, this is against the portion of litigation, it's against a company called Sandals or Sandoz and they include a number of other entities that they, that they all run under either the name Sandals or the artists, the county will be entitled to a single lump sum payment under its portion of this settlement, of course, these are class action settlements, they're with all entities that are participating in litigation, ours is one hundred forty-one thousand nine hundred eight dollars and thirty-nine cents, that I understand from our class action litigation council that will be paid at some point in twenty twenty-six. A lot of the board and I remember we get periodic payments from some of these settling defendants, in this case it's nine twenty-one, so definitely recommend we approve it. One hundred forty-one thousand nine hundred eight dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Thank you.
Uh, this is a resolution, roll call please.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Curtinback.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item nine C, resolution of the tax sale certificate assignment for the vacant lots as listed, owner Mary E Campbell, Mary Campbell Clybou, Mary Campbell, Pearlene Campbell and Bay Patterson located in Waterloo pursuant to Code of Iowa subsection four four six point three one, be approved and that said certificate of purchase of tax sale be assigned to Heather and Josh Cale, Basic Properties LLC as presented by Linda Hensman, county treasurer.
Summit.
Second.
Are you going to talk to this?
You wanted to speak to any of this or are you standing?
Uh, Linda Hensman, Treasurer, and I believe Heather looks like she is also online, they have requested the assignment of these certificates, they actually own lots in that area along with a property, I believe it's in that area as well, their, their goal is to acquire these parcels and eventually build a new dwelling, I believe, on that property, like I said, Heather is online, if she's got anything she'd like to add to that.
Nothing to add.
Where, where's this, I know the parcel location doesn't tell me much as far as the location.
I believe it looks like it's over...
It's by, in...
It's off of Amity Street.
Yeah, and, um...
Idaho.
It's kind of southwest to the corner of Newton and Idaho.
Yeah, because like the property that they currently own for a homestead, I believe, is on Idaho Street and then the parcels are all within that same area, but yeah, it's my understanding their goal is to eventually combine these different, these parcels and then eventually build a new dwelling on that.
Question Heather, do you, are you guys in contact with the city as far as extending the street down there to where those lots, these lots are at as well?
No, not yet.
Okay. When you say dwelling, what does that mean, apartments, duplex?
No, just a, a house.
Okay. And so what we're asking for is...
Currently it's just asking for the assignment of the certificates.
Okay, okay.
For the first phase of this.
For the, yeah, we'll be talking about it for the next four.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, well, go ahead and take item nine C, we can continue the conversation in terms of resolution, roll call please.
Curtinback.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item nine D, resolution of the compromise offered in the amount of five hundred dollars per parcel submitted by Heather and Josh Cale, Basic Properties LLC on taxes owed for lots be approved. Summit.
Second.
All right, discussion, very none, resolution, roll call please.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Curtinback.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item nine E, resolution of the tax sale certificate assignment for the vacant lot as listed, owner Bob Younglett located in Waterloo pursuant to Code of Iowa subsection four four six point three one, be approved and that said certificate of purchase of tax sale be assigned to Heather and Josh Cale, Basic Properties LLC as presented by Linda Hensman, county treasurer.
Summit.
Second.
And once again, this is just a parcel that is also within that same area to go a part of, they're eventually combining.
Resolution, roll call.
Curtinback.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Resolu-, uh, item nine F, resolution of the compromise offered in the amount of five hundred dollars per parcel submitted by Heather and Josh Cale, Basic Properties LLC on taxes owed for lot be approved.
Summit.
Second.
Resolution, roll call please.
Curtinback.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Item nine G, resolution to approve change order number one with Connolly Construction Inc. for the twenty twenty-four Washburn Sanitary Sewer Improvement Contract is recommended by AECOM Technical Services and Michelle Weiner Finance Department.
Summit. Second.
Good morning Board, thanks for offering the account and needed to explain any of the change order, but the, uh, project back whenever it was bid was, we weren't able to access some of the piping and so whenever we had stretched out or pumped out some of the manholes, the expected type of connection was flanged couplings for those valves and they actually ended up being mechanical joint, so it was a different type than what was expected. Connolly has proposed, uh, flanged adapters, that total addition came to two thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars and then there was also a, as they were digging out some of the pipes, there were two pipe sizes that were a different size than what was anticipated, so there were some additional fittings needed as part of that project, whenever it was bid, there were, they had bid to potentially clean and televise the lines if able, because of the levels of the lagoon, they're not able to do that portion, so they're willing to deduct that portion to offset the costs, so the total change order at this point comes to just under three thousand dollars.
How often are they doing the television, go through and check the parts?
So I know, um, that talking to the operator out of Washburn, they're planning on doing dredging because they had the IDNR come out and take a look at those lagoons, so that should be coming up pretty soon, but I don't know how typically, how often they, they clean out those lines, now what they did discover whenever they had pumped out those manholes, most of the corrosion and issues were toward the top, anything that's submerged, think about like you're something pumping your basement, if it's submerged, it's pretty well safe, it's whenever sewer gases start to corrode those pipes and so anything toward the surface is what was really needing to be replaced, so at this point, that's the assumption.
Ben and I discussed that a little bit yesterday, this system is somewhat unique because the collection pipes are under pressure, which is not how it normally is gravity fed, so in some people's opinions anyway, Ben, if, if there were cracks or leaks in the pipes, you would see things spurting out, so there would, there would be issues, so it, and it also makes it extremely difficult to televise because you have to, you would have to shut the system down and drain that area.
Be a tire cleaner.
Yeah, before you could even televise, so we're going to talk more about how we're going to maybe respond to DNR, um, about the need for that.
Okay.
So.
Just as a reminder, what's the source of the funding on this project?
This process, this project is ARPA expensive, great funding, yep.
Thank you. All right.
Thanks for the explanation, for coming on to do it for them.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, it's a resolution, so roll call please.
Brandt.
Yes.
Curtinback.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes. Nine H, resolution to direct the county engineer to undertake steps to purchase a used grade all piece of equipment using procedures in compliance with the purchasing policy, it allowed not to exceed five hundred and fifty thousand. Summit.
Second.
Good morning again Board, so this is the first time we've used this policy since the purchasing and bidding policy, the bidding and purchasing policy was updated last year, so we're a little bit in uncharted waters here, I wanted to just give you a very brief overview of what we're doing here and then I would like our Wayne, even our maintenance superintendent, he wanted to speak about the need and some of the options we've looked at, so I, we have budgeted five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to replace a piece of equipment that we, we've had on, on, in our possession for a number of years, at least twenty years, we've had a grade all machine that we've used quite a bit at the county, Wayne can talk more about what it does and so we are in need of a replacement of that machine and we feel that a used machine is probably our best way to go, at this time a new machine is costing upwards of six hundred thousand dollars and obviously that's quite a bit of money, so we started looking at options, so I, Wayne to talk about what we do with the machine and like some of the options we looked at.
Wayne Even, Road Superintendent, um, this machine is out just about every day, um, we use it for mainly repairing culvert, laying new culvert, cleaning ditches, um, and when we have trees go down like in a storm, um, we run out, we can push them off the road or get them down on the ground, so it's safe for our guys to cut the trees up, uh, we do use it in the winter, uh, we go out... We do use it in the winter. We go out and sometimes we push some snow drifts back. But it, just a very versatile machine for us. We can get across county with that thing. It's a truck excavator. We can get across county in about forty minutes from one end to the other. So like two weeks ago, we were working up by Finchford, I think. And then we got a call that a tree went down on a light and we was able to get right down there and get that tree off the road. So very versatile machine for us and works very good with, our Blue Cedar Falls kind of sitting in the middle of the county. It's no different than driving a dump truck or anything else through town. So it's just very handy machine, so.
Wayne, how old's the one you have now? Is it over four years old?
It is Zach Whitey. Who is that? Do you remember?
Two thousand ten.
Yeah, it's a ten. So.
Yeah.
We've got about eighty-five hundred hours on the machine. And you start getting up to that point and you start replacing a lot of wear items and rebuilding it and things like that. So this was kind of a good time to work into our budget also. Because we didn't have to get a road grader or a tanning dump truck or another very expensive piece of equipment, so.
Uh, how used, if we're looking at used, what would we be talking about?
I'm sorry, what was that?
The the five fifty, the five fifty is requested, that's for a used?
No, that's what we budgeted for a new one. But a brand new one is six hundred thousand, a little over six hundred thousand. So that's when we started looking into a used one. Most of our equipment, we don't want to buy used, say, snow plow, grader, whatever. But this, we did find a couple of used ones that had like four hundred to five hundred dollars on it. So they're still fairly new piece of equipment and they're substantially less cost, so.
Could you talk, Wayne, about some of the options we've considered?
Yes, we've also considered getting a grapel for grabbing trees. Right now, we just use our bucket, kind of curl it. Grapple's much safer. A lot of times, we're loading trees into the back of trucks to haul them and get them out of the, out of the way. We also have a ditching bucket. It's seventy-two inches with a smooth edge on it for cleaning ditches. And then we also have a concrete bucket for pulling asphalt out or any concrete. So so we're not damaging our ditching bucket.
So that's what's with, that is within that five fifty that's requested is those features?
Yes.
Thank you, Wayne. So in our, we've been looking at these pieces of equipment and the increasing cost of a new grade all. Zach's been researching, talking to vendors, looking online. And we we looked at different alternatives such as a wheeled excavator or primarily a wheeled excavator or of course, a new grade all. I did send you an email, some information on that, why we really prefer by purchasing used, a gently used grade all is really what we're in the market for. We, I guess our next steps would be we are, we have talked to a local vendor, Murphy Tractor. Murphy Equipment has been really stepped forward. Zach's been working quite a bit with them and they are able to source a used grade all for us. We think another vendor may be able to do that as well. So we think that they're, we think we can buy, get a used, a grade all through a reputable, reputable dealer. They would deliver it for us. We would just pay one price. We're also very interested in a third party warranty. We are considering options such as powertrain, full machine, those types of options. Our next step would be putting out, we put together two or three page specifications, sending that out to these dealers and then getting some estimates or quotes back. And that is how we would like to proceed next. I would like your direction on, would you like us to come back once we've found a machine and asked to buy it then? Or can, would you like us, are we allowed to purchase it and then come back to you and tell you what we found? The policy is not entirely clear on that. Perhaps Mr. Trynan would like to weigh in on that.
The, with regard to the, I pulled it up here, the bidding requirements as pertaining to used equipment, you're just talking about the fact you don't have to, you're not required to go for bid.
Right, right.
Any, any piece of equipment that is over five thousand dollars, you need it for approval for under the current policy. It says competitive quotes or bids are preferred but not required for persons, used vehicle, and other used equipment. And I don't know, you know, if board recalls discussing this when we pass the update to the policy. I believe a couple of you were on the board at that point. But it, the fact of the matter is that sometimes when you get used equipment, it's tough to have, to be able to comparison shot for it. And that was expressed to us by these two departments when we were talking about how the policy should be relative to person's used equipment. So in this case, it doesn't require competitive quotes, doesn't require competitive bidding. Kathy would be able to, with board approval, and I think she would be responsible enough to see if there are more than, you know, one out there, compare them. But there can be a lot of different factors that used equipment can turn on besides just price. And so that's how the policy is supposed to work. I agree. I don't believe, we've seen used equipment purchased since we've, since we've changed the policy. Maybe, maybe there was one, but I don't remember what it was. We did, I just have this faint memory that maybe, maybe that's our statement.
We bought a used truck last year and that's kind of what spurred on the policy change.
That, yeah, okay, and invited in that, but I was thinking of as well, so.
It's, yeah, I was gonna say also the convenience of being able to purchase when you can find the vehicle and not have to delay in coming back to us and losing the vehicle. So that was really kind of a prompt.
To your question of sort of what's the next step, I'm comfortable if we were to say five hundred, not to exceed five hundred and fifty thousand, give you the guidelines and and you go from there. And if, if for whatever reason you have to come back and ask for additional dollars, then so be it. Uncomfortable there.
Yeah, I agree with that. For me, this is the authorization, so. Kathy, is there any plans with the the piece that we have now, the piece of equipment? Is there any monies to be selling that or?
Do you want to come in on that, Zach and Wayne?
Yeah, Zach McFarland, shop foreman. I believe we've just taken over to a local auctioneer, Cedar Falls, where I've been able to have a pretty good repertoire with him. He can just put it out on the, he's got access to four or five different sites, like machinery finder and stuff. I would say probably the average. I mean, he's bought the best one that comes back with a pretty good amount of money. And he's, I think he's only like four percent that he charges. So he's really relatively cheaper. But I would think money wise, if I've been watching the market on there, might be, you know, that fifteen to seventeen thousand dollar value.
Oh, wow.
Potentially. I mean, so, but he reaches a lot of different places.
I guess I was hoping it'd be more than that.
Well.
I thought you were trying to buy it.
Yeah. It's a test drive.
Do you guys know what that warranty would cost and then how long that would extend for?
Well, that third party warranty, like we were talking, we were talking with Murphy Tractor, Justin Lockard. He's looking into like a potential because normally on a third party vendor, extended warranty, you can get, you know, approximately a couple of years. I asked him about maybe possibly getting a certified pre-owned. All that means is there's potential five years additional warranty. And that'll cover all the major components, electrical, hydraulics, engine, powertrain, which would be a better warranty. He hasn't, he's still working on the ins and outs and all, if he can do it or not, and what the exact price is on that, so. I mean, feel free to reach out. I've got a stack of research and different vendors. It's a pretty specific unit, this grade all. There's not really anything in comparison to it, so.
And getting, selling the existing vehicle, Mike, there's, we're fine to go through an auctioneer on it and that's.
That's typically what we've done for used equipment. There isn't any problem with that. As long as it's objectively designed to get the best possible value that we can. Because that's, that's a public offer.
Yep.
Does that have to be a separate item that we have to approve then, disposing of equipment like that or?
Yes, we typically put those on the consent agenda.
I'd say I don't think we ever debated it. It's come up in conversation before the board, so yeah, that's.
Okay, that's, just learn process.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes. Got a resolution. We've had some discussion on proceedings. You're good with directives?
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution, roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Hall.
Item nine I, discussion, possible board action on the establishment of a new committee named Rural Steering Committee to hold annual meetings with the county staff support.
I'll bring this up. This is kind of one of the items I've been serving in this role is get better communication with our folks in rural areas, attending the township meetings. I've found that the folks there have been very interesting and very connected with the folks, their neighbors and the townships. And doing a rural steering committee, I thought this would be a great way if we started something, make it annual. So we're doing continuing communications from what the county services are to our folks in those rural areas that it seemed a little bit disconnected. There's, there's not been a lot of communication there. I think this would help in that process. So just in presentation, this first one, I've been talking with TJ, knowing our assessor, about doing a presentation similar to what we did with the town halls with the property value assessments and how they were done, also including more in ag in this part, portion. Talked with Tim Jameson. He's got some changes and updates for the township trustees and clerks. It's been quite a while, I guess, since last time they've done anything with that. Talking with Kathy, we're talking about with the sales tax amendment coming up in November, it'd be a great time for Kathy to talk with folks and helping spread that word, what that's all about and getting some support for the need for that change. Mike Henderson's talked about where we have a lot of properties in a rural area. We had some notice of some I'm not gonna say damage, but there was some folks that were approaching on some of the properties and leaving messes that, again, this is just kind of a way for Mike to get his name and information out there to communicate with folks. And if they see problems or there is issues. Gabby brought up the idea that we're looking at doing the strategic planning rollout. Be a great opportunity to again, to have a crowd to do some of that with the public in that process. The hope was maybe we could look at doing something on Wednesday, August twenty seventh. As we get closer, we'll see if everything's gonna roll out with that date yet. Location, Gabby checked with Hawkeye College. We're looking for someplace that was directly in the center of the county for folks to try to come to. Hawkeye College has a Tama Hall, I believe, is what we're looking at. There is a cost for a hundred and twenty-five dollars for that. And in this process of trying to develop something, also looking at some ideas for next year ahead. So we're always looking forward to what the, have a teaser for people to say, I'm glad I came, I learned something, and I'm looking forward to coming next year. That's the plan. I'm still learning the process of how to do some of this stuff. So brought to the board for board action, if we need to move forward with anything or getting blessing in this process and make sure staff know what we're looking at, trying to accomplish. Was that idea that the the rural steering committee would be made up of the township trustees and clerks? At this point, Chris, it's still in development, yeah. I know there's some other folks I've talked with in rural areas have had interest in some of this information. So maybe it gets opened up for more. But I think right now, starting out, this was the best group of people I felt that needed this information, could definitely use it. And they're connected very much with their neighbors out in those rural areas that this, this worst one, I thought, would be the best, you know, is get the township trustees and clerks.
Open to anybody, right? Whoever wanted to come?
Yeah. I think we have to. I, I think that's, that's imperative that we have that open too. This one is specific because it's got stuff for the clerks and township trustees. But I think there's information, there's something good for anybody.
Yeah, I think they would enjoy coming and get some benefit out of it too.
Well, I'll offer a motion to approve the creation of this committee and support for this annual meeting.
Second.
I guess I'd have some questions as far as steering committee. I mean, just in some of the things that we've approached this as, that we're not steering them, they're not steering us. The trustees and supervisors are very different. Just a question, I don't know how you arrived at the steering committee name or what label or however.
The term steering is basically a steering communication. It has nothing to do with steering as far as direction. It's basically just a communication process.
Well, I know Justin talked about a few weeks ago or months ago or two about having, you know, evening meetings. And I think that probably didn't receive a lot of support for that because you always miss people at that as well. But I wondered if we shouldn't be looking as a board at some type of a communication plan or rollout or something that we hit other areas, not just that, not that this couldn't be a group, but that we wouldn't look at something like a little larger in scope of what we do, when we do it and how we do it or work through some of the details on that. I don't know, just.
We're at a little less than ten thousand that reside in the incorporated. We're at over twelve thousand black folks. We're at almost fifteen thousand students. We're at about seven thousand Hispanic and Latinx. But we've got constituency groups that to to have one called out feels a little funky to me. The state struggles with the rural urban divide at every level. And so to institutionalize it specifically here versus especially with the steering committee, you know, the words do matter at, at the government level. You know, if it is, it's just constituencies, that's, that's a little different. If it's mechanisms to communicate, if there are town halls where we're gonna target messaging, I just, I'm, I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing where it. I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with wrapping my head around it as a board authorized function.
I don't think that's the purpose of it too. You know, when we looked at our strategic planning, one of our items specifically was public outreach and access to programs and services. That's what this is about.
But we should do it broadly and not specifically to rural, is my argument.
And that would be great. I'm just trying to get something started with this process.
But I think when you start it so narrowly, it keeps it narrow versus starting, starting it broadly. And then we can bring it back in and do facets.
So if we have a meeting that, and Tim shared with me, Jameson, that there's had meetings just with the township trustees and clerks before.
They were, were they, they were the educational.
Yeah. So this would be just kind of building up on top of that. This is gonna be open for more than just the clerks and townships. The idea with the term the steering committee was basically just, because we have people in the rural areas that have no clue and it's just way of steering communication. and it's just a way of steering communication with folks.
But that's not what a steering committee is, is the problem. Like, like again, the words, once we set a committee up, the words matter. And, and so.
What would, how would we define it? What do you guys think would be a more appropriate term? Because the way I interpret this, as we've talked even before you ran for the seat, was for that exact issue, people, but I heard the same thing. People in the county, this is why guys out in your, anybody out in the county, the general area, doesn't run for these seats because they think they're not gonna win. Because the voter base is primarily Democratic in Warland, Cedar Falls. Whether that's true or not, doesn't matter, I guess, but that's where they're at, and so I find a lot of value in it too, so.
I think there's value in it. I'm not saying there's no value in it. I just think it needs to be on a broader. This could, like I said, this could be one group, or this could be how we design it or define it. I think the groups that you mentioned there and the individuals, whether it's Kathy or Mike or Gabby, and all of them apply to everyone in the county and the interest and to really look like we're targeting a group for better communication is, you know, just one aspect to hit this group. And if they're part of a larger scope too, but this is kind of, I know, like a more targeted or directed issue thinking, but.
Well, yeah, and again, this was back to years ago when Sheriff Thompson was doing town hall meetings and going out there. I went to several in, outside the city limits, so that Port and Chesapeake, that was one. Trying to think the other one, Gilbertville. And this again, another way, and again, next year, talk with Nate about maybe him doing a presentation at this. Longo, I know Health Department brought up some thoughts, well, we have a problem trying to communicate with folks in rural areas about septic tanks and wells and the test and this and that. So again, it's specific to rural issues that we deal with. That was kind of the thing. Attending the town hall meetings, Kathy helped me with the, the five-year plan with the bridges and roads. Man, those folks just, it was like something totally new to them, seeing something like that, so. And I know it's not new to Kathy, trying to get the information out, it just, it was presented a different way where all of a sudden. So the idea is to communicate folks in their rural area better. That is the goal. If the term for it needs to be changed, that's fine. The idea is we need to develop a better communication with our folks in those rural areas.
But why is it just for those folks in rural areas? I mean, not that they don't have a, a critical point or.
They're the ones who want it. They want it.
You don't think others want it?
My, we haven't heard it. Have you guys heard anything about?
Well, when you're out and talking to people, I think they'd say if they'd not been, had this opportunity to and would love to see us probably more. I don't know, maybe some wouldn't as well, but I just think it's the relationship that you're really out kind of trying to establish with the public. But that's with everyone, I'd say, in Black Hawk County.
Well, that was also one of the reasons for the town hall meetings with TJ, talking about how property values are assessed. Is getting that communication starting in different ways. That was another one. But this is specifically on rural issues. It's what the, the agenda is for this first one and hopefully in the future. If folks in the rural areas or urban areas want to attend, it's, it's gonna be open for general public. It's how do we start developing a better way of communicating with these folks in rural areas? This is just one idea and how we can do it to set up maybe in the annual process.
Oh, and I appreciate the fact that you're doing that. I'm just looking at this more, to me, as a work session of what we, how we go about it or what we wanna do or what we wanna accomplish and this being a part of it. I'm not trying to say there are a weight that's looking doing something like this. I just mean, let's look at it broader and.
I think a broader communication strategy. I think every person, every constituency group deserves a strategic planning rollout, for instance. This only calls for here versus the board coming together, having a broader conversation of how we want to hit all of those constituencies. Because we know that when we take one action, that sort of, that, that tends to be the action. It doesn't typically snowball into this broader movement. It tends to be, it's, we're gonna do the rural thing, right? We're gonna, we're gonna do that. Where we, to Lill's point, do the work session, talk about what those town halls, what this sort of structure could look like for a more open communicative board. I think, I imagine, we're all supportive of various levels of communication, whether it's with rural, with students, with various populations. I think to, to start us off so narrowly is where it sort of gets us in a, it sort of sticks with me a little bit.
Well, I think when we've looked at things strategically, when we've kind of considered that plan, it's kind of like starting broad and then, you know, focusing in or zeroing in on where we wanna go, in what direction we wanna go, and how many things we wanna have and, and that type of thing. And that is to emphasize, I guess, or put the emphasis on wonder, but on all. And not that each doesn't have special interests, or like you said, there could be some programs designed differently, obviously because of the audience, but that we, I guess, consider it for everyone. And then we, you kind of go to a certain time, like you said, we wanted to try this, kind of like you mentioned the town halls, when you wanted to do those and you find out if they're successful, or you find out what people want or they don't want, or if they're gonna come. And then, because you're using staff resources and you're doing, if you're paying for these types of events too, there's costs involved. Whatever we're doing for it to evaluate and assess how many you want to continue having, or is this working or not? Or why isn't it working and what we can do to improve it, or maybe people just don't wanna see us like we think, like we think are here from us as much as we think. But I, I think, like you said, you had a group probably that was pulled together that you met with frequently and so got that kind of input. I'm not sure that we wouldn't get that from a lot of groups in Waterloo, Cedar Falls, surrounding communities, if we went to those communities even and said, you know, when's the last time you've heard anything on these topics and would you like to hear something about them? I think you'd get probably that same response. I'd like to think you would, but.
I think the, the difference though, when we reference the people, communities, suburbs, whatever, within Warland, Cedar Falls, is they've got their own body of government to represent it to. And, and we are the body for the county. So for the people that live, you know, out in Washburn or south of that, north side of the county, this is the local government. And so I've always seen this role as the city council for the people who live in the country. And so it would be a ten or twelve thousand people, which is not a large group of people. I think they deserve it. They want it. They're thirsty for it and, you know, I'm glad you brought up the evening meeting thing. Because when you said, like, some people wouldn't be able to attend your meeting on the board. Because I think the issue with the nine o'clock is that nobody from the public can attend these at nine in the morning. And that's something I've heard from many people. So it's just something to consider, I think, but at the end of the day, if, if the board doesn't vote in favor of doing this for Rich, I mean, he can still go ahead and call it Richie's Town Hall if he wants to.
Well, see, you're saying that's.
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
But he can't then use staff resources.
Right.
And I think that's where we're, where, where this is coming to a rub, is that this isn't Richie's, right? This is not Richie's Town Hall.
Yeah.
We can't use staff resources on Richie's Town Hall or on Tabitha's Town Hall or on Justin's, right? Like, if, if the board has to sort of act intentionally, direct staff, that, that's, that's just a part of our, our role. And so, you know, I guess that's where I'm hoping this can be a broader.
Well, and, and I'm supported by all of us. Like I said, it's something that we all want our, all of our support, obviously, I suppose, yeah. If you said we'd like to do this and you only had three people or two people that wanna do it, you couldn't do it, number one. But that's why I said I think it's important that it's board initiated and it's board driven. And it's all of us taking part and participating and working on it. I know you're doing a lot of the work you have on this. But then it becomes a rich committee, richest committee. And, and I know we talked a little bit about it yesterday as far as, I said, the difference, you know, in things that you did before you're elected versus when you are elected and part of this board, is we have that independence or control and decision making outside that that is our own. But once you're elected and you're working as a board, in this board particularly, you're only twenty percent of it. And so then it requires all of us having a part, doing, playing a role, doing some of the work, not just falling to you, but, or, you know, agreeing to how do we wanna go about this and do we wanna do it? I think I said to Rich, it was like, you know, what is the date that works for everybody or the dates, if you did multiples? Maybe those do or don't work, maybe they do or have us another subject matter that somebody else would like to consider or some project. It's sometimes involving staff, but what things they'd like to speak to, not just the things we'd like them to speak to. Just little things like that, but I just thought it was just, I, I guess, you know, when you and I had the conversations about the town halls, that's why I said to me, it somewhat changed. It wasn't board driven. It was more because it was something you wanted to accomplish. And I, and you ended up then having to do the work and most of the work you and Gabby just kind of went out and did. But I'd like to think that communication is an overall board goal to improve with this group in any place. And it's not just your responsibility or mine or two of us, or you and Justin decided that the two of you'd like to do it. It's, it, the board's decision to do it and go and support it of it and.
Well, one of my goals is this is just a one or two year thing. This would continue whether I'm here or not in the future. It is a way of making sure we are getting better communication, not just into us, but also out to the folks in our rural areas. That was very blunt when I was attending a town hall meeting to disconnect. A lot of the times, their only time to talk with someone, unless they got an issue they're dealing with, is with Tim Jameson, who helps guide the townships. This is taking the information that the county, the services to them in the areas that generally they have no clue.
Well, they have a voice. They, they're just not used to it. I think they've had a good relationship with Tim and the auditor's office too, so that's been a different voice and things have gone well. Like I said, they come to our office when they had an issue this last time about the salaries of clerks and that type of thing. They talked to Tim. Tim recommended they come over. They had a, we had a great discussion and went to the budget. You guys all had that discussion, Matt heard it, and the arguments for how the salaries hadn't been looked at even in twenty years or something. And so a decision was made. So to me, the township trustees I have known and talked to, it has been open communication, but not maybe the outreach that we should be doing. And if the board agrees, that that's part of it, then that's, we wanna work on that. But I just like, you know, I just don't want us to go the wrong track and try to create something and then have to backtrack or do it differently. I'd rather us take the time to do it the way we'd all appreciate it, excuse me, than wanna work together and not just to be unfollowed one person.
I don't think it's following. He's volunteered to do it.
Yeah.
And he's like, hey, send me.
Well, that part though becomes his committee. I mean, him doing it though, and just because he's gonna go out and do it. And that's why I said it should be board driven, any more than you'd wanna go do your own, or I'd go say, I'd like, I think I'll do a, get Yolando together and he and I'll go out and do some road show type things, you know, and talk about veterans. Good intention, well, you know, probably, and very interested targeted groups, and so I could do that. But then I'm utilizing staff resources and funding, their time, their money, their social media attention. And then it becomes, it's my show. It becomes Linda and Yolando instead of the board or Black Hawk County. Because that, that, most of our departments that have done town halls and that type of thing have been, obviously had a purpose, whether it's roads and bridges or something like that, but it's like very much their show. We're there to introduce, we're there to be a part and welcome to answer questions or, you know, have a role in it, but all of us have that role. Okay. And I know we.
Well, that's what this is about. That's what we brought to the board.
Yes, you know, in my first year in office, I tried to do town halls all throughout. And I, it was a thing I was doing on my own, without any county staff time involved. But it was pretty hit or miss. You know, I was doing it on urban and rural, and so I think to be successful, we need to have all of us kind of buying into this. And so I'm, I'm kind of hearing a desire, and I, I still remain supportive of having some evening meetings throughout the year. So I want to go on the record with that. But I'm hearing like that maybe we need, maybe this is gonna take five or six of these kind of presentations. And we need to kind of maybe, kind of come up with that list of, of where and when those would be. And I'm wondering, so that we, because I wanna, I, I think that, for me, I don't know, like, the establishment of the committee part. I think that's a little clunky, but I think the establishing of an annual meeting, you know, both rural and, and in different urban areas, different constituencies, I'm wondering, maybe how long it would take this board to kind of collectively come to an agreement on, on what and when those should be so that we can keep this momentum going, but also have, have everybody, have everybody buying into this so that we're successful across the board.
Yeah, I like the idea of multiple, I mean, that's just my opinion, but I sort of having multiple ones or planned kind of a schedule and put some things out there and see what we get for participation or what, you know, type of groups show up and what don't. And, and yet all of us are aware of the dates and then we can kind of, don't have to hit everyone, but if we want to, it's available for all of us. We know it, we go to them, we welcome meet and greets, question and answer, whatever, but that we're all either willing and wanna do it or if somebody can't be, then somebody's there to fill in too, more than just fall to one person.
Is that, is that something that, you know, say within the next two weeks, we could all prioritize and come up with, or would it take more time?
I don't think it would necessarily take more time to, to, to talk through. I guess my perspective would be we could do a work session next week and talk, it's a work session, right?
Some of us have gone, I was thinking of Gabby being kind of instrumental in helping too, perhaps because of the role she has, but I just thought, she's gonna, is that next week you're in Texas? I'll be on vacation next week too as well, but I just thought it's like something that I'd like to see us do together.
And, but to talk through.
And you're on vacation as well.
I'm on vacation right now.
Oh, yeah.
I'm like, will be next week.
I'm having a good time, I can tell, yeah. Well, do, oh, but you're gonna be in town or out town? You say out of town next week?
We'll figure it out.
Oh, oh, okay.
We're, we're, I'll be present regardless of.
I just meant as far as this meeting together, and I think in person it helps to have those work sessions, but yeah.
Maybe, and maybe, I don't know, wild idea, maybe it's stupid. Maybe everybody heads up one and then, hey, here's what works for me and you just fit it in your schedule or don't, to make it simple. I mean, so try to attend, just getting five people to, with all the stuff going on, everybody's in, with their wives, getting all of us to be able to attend, matching up with their schedules is, I think, very.
You mean for these kind of events?
Yeah.
Oh, well, yeah, it's, it's whoever, it's just, yeah, it's board sanctioned kind of a thing, but it's hit and miss on who can go and who's available. It's not like all five of us have to be there.
Right.
I just see it as an opportunity. We've invested a ton of time in strategic planning. For us to do sort of quick shot communication, right, where, where we might have a committee here, we might do a committee there, we might do a town. I think, I think we can take a step back and say, we wanna do four, five, six town halls throughout the community, focus on these issues at each, and just be really strategic in that communication as much as we've been in that planning. I, I think, I think we can get to a place where we're not just talking to one segment of folks, but talking to a, a broader swatch. And if, to your point, if you can make it, great. If you can't, we'll have other folks here.
I just meant for the five of us to be together in a work session would be great too.
Yeah.
At a board meeting typically, and that helps as we can come to some ideas and thoughts. But everybody could still come back with their ideas and thoughts and.
Yeah, I'm not locked in on a real steering committee. The idea was to get the communication, steering communication back. That's, that was the role about that.
It's a plan, it's a plan really, just like to get better communication.
We've got seventeen townships. There's three trustees and one clerk in each, so roughly about seventy people could be in attendance. And then there's other folks that would be interested in sitting in on this as well that have reached out to me or talked with them about it. So in that process, potentially we could maybe have eighty people there. Do I expect eighty people? No, we're not gonna get everybody that's there on trustees. But it was a first step in trying to do more communication with folks in rural areas. I, I just, it's a attempt. I want the board involved with this. I want everybody to have some input. And I, also the communication, people having the ability to know, there's Chris, there's Tabitha, there's Rand. Justin and I have been out talking.
Justin and I had been out talking with some folks already. And then I ran into folks and said, they met Justin earlier. I was like, great, how about me and all of us at some time? This is an opportunity for us to be shown that, yes, we're here for them, but we're actually here, an opportunity to help them meet us.
And you said this could include other people not in the rural areas, is that what you meant?
If they want, if other folks wanted to come, that's fine.
Well, and I don't mean to labor your point. I was just thinking though, you could do these, you know, when people talked about us going to them or visiting and their areas, it could depend on where we look at these strategically. It includes rurals, but others as well. And we could do it in multiple locations.
Well, this was specific on rural issues. Rural ag property evaluations, change in the township trustees and courts deals that Tim's got.
Yeah, I can see that somewhere.
Kathy, the only folks are going to be voting on that sales tax folks are the folks that are not in our urban areas. Mike's issues with our properties outside the urban areas, that's separate. The only thing that it's inclusive, whether you're urban or whatever, is Gabby's talking about bringing out information on the strategic planning rollout. Other than this, this is all specific to rural areas.
This one might be because you've defined it that way. But I just meant if we looked at it strategically and where we'd like to do this and what kind of subjects and what we'd expect of staff or what staff would be able to attend at that time or whatever. It's just, this one came with that.
Those other groups, that's great. Let's set up something for them as well. I mean, just, this is just the first step of trying to get smart communication out there.
Yeah, worst case scenario, any of us could do one of these and not include staff, right? And just whatever questions comes, concerns people, how their rights. And then go back and check with that department head and they'll get back to you.
One hundred percent. Yeah, it's just a matter of how we use staff resources up, with planning those events and that sort of thing. If it's not, if the board hasn't voted to do it, it becomes really difficult, I think, for staff to manage expectations of a singular supervisor versus the full board. That's already a hard thing with, you know, five.
They'd be able to flex hours too, I assume, department heads, so as to not have to be expected to work eight to four thirty and then also attend this from five thirty to, to make it easier on them. I mean, I don't.
Assuming it was a board, assuming it was a board.
Right, 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 that's what I'm saying. I mean, I wouldn't expect people to be doing a bunch of stuff after business hours, you've got family and other obligations, so.
The idea is to have hopefully all in and people in and out ninety minutes. If there's questions, if you go to two hours, definitely schedule for no more than ninety minutes.
Will it come back in two weeks? Will we all be here two, whatever date that is?
I'm going to be, I'll be zooming in on the twenty.
Okay, I just meant to.
You do have a motion in a second?
Yeah.
Do you want me to repeat that? Schwartz made a motion to create a committee and support the annual meeting in one second.
Well, it was the establishment of a new committee named Rural Steering Committee.
I'm just repeating back exactly what Schwartz made for a motion.
Oh, okay.
I'm going to re-sign my motion to adjourn. Just hold on, board here.
I don't mean hold it up, but I was going to say we could do it a different day. I mean, it's not like we can't do a work session any day, but.
I'm wide open in the next two and a half weeks.
When everybody says wide open, as long as we're looking at dates here?
As long as we're looking at dates, as long as we're looking at dates that work for me, I'm wide open.
Okay. I was going to say, at the end of the meeting, we'll talk, see if we can get Galway's thing on the thirty first at that one. But okay, not for this one. Well, you want, I mean, are you gone just that day, you say, Chris, on the twenty ninth? But you're back rest of the week? Does another day work for anybody? Just trying to get together for all of us.
Irish Fest coming up.
Oh, that's the thirty first, yeah. And I'm trying to get an hour from him for.
When are you done with your vacation?
I'll be back to work the twenty sixth.
Yeah, I am. I'm back at twenty.
Does the twenty eighth work for anybody? Are you?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be, but I'm here the thirtieth, you know. I'm back the thirtieth and I'm not gone for a long time.
You're back the thirtieth?
Yeah.
Does the thirtieth work for a work session?
Nine AM, is that cutting it too close on the thirtieth?
I'll make it work.
See, the thirty first was a no go.
What?
Was the thirty first a no go?
Um, no, no. Thirty first, I was gone for, the thirty first was for Galway. And he left, said morning or afternoon. That was the come in and talk to the all elected officials and us and that type of thing. He said he'd do an hour and if you want more, that's up to you.
But you want to get thirty first?
Well, we just talked, he initially did and I thought Justin had to work. But he said, when I got back on the second time, he said, I'm available the thirty first if whatever, you guys tell me what works for you. Rich, I knew, said he had Irish Fest set up, but he might be able to give us an hour if he had.
If it's in the morning, I'll see what I can do to get covered.
We just need cover for it.
The thirty first, I'm free. I prefer doing, I'm on my days off from work as opposed to cutting that beat for short.
So, but the thirty first works, you mean?
Thirty first works all day.
All day, so you went morning like nine?
Yep.
Something like nine o'clock?
Ninety first worked for you, Chris?
Is that for Chris?
Yeah. There you are.
I'm afraid to write it down. Okay.
He's breathing up a waste now.
Work sessions, one second. Yeah, now for this, what do we want to do? Work sessions, that? Do we want to do a combined?
I just agree with you, combined.
Combined, it works for me.
It's that hard to come up with anytime as it is.
Let's take that and roll it on, except for his commitment to Irish Fest.
I would suspect that we could come with a list of.
Being prepared.
Yeah.
Okay.
We don't have to draw that conversation out, right? Come with a list of ideas in terms of other constituencies that we want to make sure that we, that we incorporate into a strategic communication strategy. Town halls, taking information, meeting folks where they are. I think we could do that in pretty short order at the first part of that meeting or at the tail end of that meeting. And, yeah.
I'd probably go him first so he can go and go back to doing mine and not wait on us to finish. If that's all right with everybody, kind of do it that way at night. And then, all right, okay.
Does that work?
Does that work then?
Thirty first, it's longer, I'm going to make it work again.
Thank you. Yeah, okay. Thanks.
All right.
Hate to be this guy.
Yep.
But somebody got to be. August first is also good, but that's like, is that in the middle of Irish Fest?
That is.
That is Irish Fest.
Yeah, yeah. See, wasn't so bad being the guy.
I'm also fine all next week, so.
Yeah, but you're on.
I know, yeah, yeah.
In the event of, I think we're just trying to figure out how to get all, all five in the room versus.
Yeah, Zoom meeting, trying to, not that you can't, but Zoom, yeah.
Thirty first, nine.
Yeah.
Try to keep it to, as close to an hour.
And then us follow up with this work session, their thoughts and ideas, yeah. Okay, thank you, thank you all.
Thanks.
Yep. All right. All right, item nine J. Hearing, bid opening, office furniture for phase B, high press location. We have a motion to receive and place all files, proof of publication, from July third, twenty twenty five.
It's all moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Close, same sign.
Hey, one thing.
Yep. You good?
Yeah.
Uh, two, motion to close the hearing after all written comments are received. So, were there any, anything submitted?
No, no written comments.
Okay, board, we did receive four bids. Just so you know, the budgeted amount, budget estimate for this was three hundred and fifty thousand. First bid received from Kirk Gross.
We need to close the hearing before we open that.
You know what? You have, we had the motion, the second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, all right. Go ahead, Mike, or Roy.
Kirk Gross.
Go ahead.
Kirk Gross, I did want to point out also, we do have one alternate for this project. And that alternate is to add dual monitor arms and also a power module in the furniture package. So that would be listed as alternate number one. So first bid received from Kirk Gross out of Waterloo, Iowa, two hundred forty seven thousand, seven hundred seventy one dollars. Alternate number one price, forty five thousand, one hundred and seventy one.
What was that bid price again, the first?
Two hundred forty seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy one. Second bid is from Paragon Interiors out of Cedar Rapids, Iowa. We did receive the bid security bond. Amount, two hundred sixty nine thousand, two hundred forty five dollars and twenty two cents. Two six nine, two four five, twenty two. Alternate number one, forty six thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars and fifty cents. Four six one three zero, five zero. Number three is from Workspace Incorporated out of Cedar Rapids, Iowa. The amount is two hundred fifty four thousand, three hundred and eighty nine dollars. Alternate, twelve thousand, seven hundred and seventy five dollars and forty five cents. Last one is Ventures LLC, otherwise known as Office Concepts in Cedar Falls, Iowa. Bid bond was received. Two hundred twenty six thousand, one hundred and fifty two dollars and thirty one cents. Two two six, one five two, thirty one. And the alternate is thirty eight thousand, three hundred and eighty two dollars and forty cents.
Can you read the alternate amount again?
All right.
That, what was that alternate amount?
Uh, thirty eight thousand, three hundred eighty two dollars and forty cents. Three eight, three eight, two four zero.
You commented on bid bottom for three of those, but Workspace also had bid.
Uh, yes, sorry about that.
That's okay, just checking.
And that is it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a motion that the board of supervised reviews, place on file the bids to allow time to review. Said bids is recommended by the board giving, assuming it's director.
So.
Sorry.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Item ten, any reports or information from the board?
Just a comment that we, I talked last week about the workforce development board and the changes in that. Whether or not some of those groups would merge, there is a meeting this Thursday morning. So hopefully get some more information and bring that back to you for some decision or thought. Because I know that August first was kind of a date they were pushing up against and some response. Thank you.
In reference to that inquiry with Hudson Herald, I spoke with a gentleman yesterday or last night on the phone. And so they're working diligently to save a newspaper, so I think it's not over yet. So I'm good. Just the short version of that story.
They made it sound like it was, they had two new owners yesterday. So we'll see, I guess.
I attended the Duckerton City Council meeting last night. And they got some things going on with new ball diamond and pickleball courts. And they have a need for putting in an ADA public restroom. I would just let you know I'd be passing along information if they want to make an application in the county here in the future. So as soon as that's ready, there's another group that's got an interest in helping out.
Since tomorrow, I'm giving a presentation at the Iowa Hunger Summit for my other work. But it relates to this as hunger is continuing to be on the rise in the state and in this community. And it's only going to be exacerbated now with the passage of the so-called big beautiful bill, which includes massive cuts to SNAP and Medicaid that are going to really hurt the most vulnerable people in our community. So I'll be sharing any, if there's anything innovative that I hear other places are doing, I'll be sharing that with everybody.
All right, you have a motion to adjourn?
It's all moved.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.